Can you hear me okay Josh? Can you hear me Dr. Jackson?
I hear you fine.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, we have one minute. Dr. Jackson, hopefully.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll give it one more minute. Hopefully I'm viewing the screen right, I'm looking at the Welcome to Lindop and it'll transition soon, correct?
Yes.
Okay. You know I'm on this new device, so I have to make sure that I have everything going on, we'll go in one minute. I'm not sure this is a good idea to not just start right now, but we'll see how it goes. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully we have a quorum, I can't really tell at this point. I would like to call the Lindop School District 92 Board of Education meeting to order at 7:00 PM, may I have a roll call please, Ms. Suarez?
Yes, Board Member Jordana Harret.
Present.
Board Member Arrington.
Present.
Board Member Griffin.
She may have to unmute, I know she was there, I saw her.
Present.
Wonderful.
Board Member Dawson. Board Member Hannah. Board Member Taylor.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes, I'm just waiting, she's muted right now.
Okay.
Board Member Willis Wolford.
Present.
Wonderful. Is Ms. Taylor, did she?
Can you, can you hear me?
Here now.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm here, present.
Thank you.
And we have a quorum. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to pause for a moment of silence, please, please turn your cell phones off or to silence. And this moment of silence will be in honor of peace. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is our special presentation. Dr. Jackson, would you like to begin?
Yes. We have a special presentation this evening, and this is to honor and to appreciate and show our appreciation for Mr. Andrew Rouse, Mayor Katrina Thompson, and Mr. Chris Welch, Representative Chris Welch. But we'll start with Mr. Rouse.
Is Mr. Rouse present right now? Was Mr.?
Yes, he's here, I see him as an attendee.
Okay, is he, is he allowed to be, maybe he's not allowed to be unmuted, so we'll just, we'll just begin. Ms. Williams Wolford, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful, wonderful. I would really like for you to start this because you're the, you know. Please mute your, please mute whoever's not talking, who's ever talking, would like for Ms. Williams Wolford to begin, but I'd like to start by saying that, you know, we were talking about just how difficult it was with the transition to remote, but the one thing that made it great was one-on-one computers. And then Ms. Wolford began to think about things, and Ms. Wolford, I'd like you to take it from here. Ms. Williams Wolford, please.
Good evening, everyone, yes, as we were in the middle of a pandemic, something that many of us, our ages, have never experienced. And we were given the orders to go home and students to learn, take on the rest of their education from the home, which was something so different. And considering the different work that has to do with different entities and seeing how so many districts were scrambling ordering computers and even Chicago Public Schools, I believe they were in the news, saying how, you know, they had some computers but didn't have enough, and so they didn't give anybody computers from my understanding until they got enough computers to give everybody. And I just thought about Lindop and how grateful I was that at some point we had a board member, which was Andrew Rouse, that was very direct and forward, outspoken about this one-to-one agenda that he had, and he would not let up, he would speak about it often and said he really wanted it. And it was in the midst of this pandemic that I realized, wow, you know, we were, it really put Lindop, it set us apart from many of our surrounding districts, even in our suburbs out here, because Dr. Jackson and the team, they already had the computers, the children were already using them every day, it was nothing new to them. And all they had to do was roll it out and say, you know, come sign this and pick up your device so we can continue educating you from the comfort of your home. And so I just reflected on the fact that, you know, and was grateful for Mr. Rouse and the superintendent at that time making the recommendation so that we could move forward with this. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Rouse.
Very welcome.
Are there any other board members that would like to take the time to say something to Mr. Rouse if you'd like to? Is there anybody, any other board members at all that would like to? Okay, well, I will take the opportunity, Mr. Rouse, I hope you're doing well.
Right.
Yeah, I had the privilege of working with you and enjoyed your, you know, just your presence on the board, had a strong voice, you never majored in a minor, you always spoke your voice. And, you know, however we voted, you know, we voted and kept it moving. I can remember when we initiated Permanthing boards, and it was a difficult process because we didn't have a plan. And I know Lyons, if I remember, that was a district, if I remember correctly, I forget, Lyden was the first district with one-on-one computers. And it was just something, as Penny said, you would not stop every second, you know, and sometimes it was even not on the agenda. And by the way, one-on-one computers would not let it go, it was relentless with it. And the great thing about it, we had a process, we just didn't just given everybody, it was a pilot classroom, it was very well thought out. And, you know, and Penny was absolutely right to just mention that recognition should be made and given, thank you so much, Mr. Rouse. Thank you for your commitment and thank you for, your legacy lives, by the way.
That's a beautiful thing, it definitely is a beautiful thing.
Yeah. And I would like to just close by saying I met Mr. Rouse in 2016 when he came to do a walkthrough through the building. And the first thing he mentioned was technology, and he wanted to know if it was working for the children. He has had a focus on it and was happy to see his work living even after he has left, as Mrs. Harris says, his legacy. So, Mr. Rouse, I would like to thank you for paving the way through forward thinking and for always placing children first, thank you.
My honor.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse. Any comments?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, I didn't know you guys could hear me, yeah, well, this is, this is new and old to me again, you know, because I haven't been there in a long time. And I am just so proud of you guys for continuing to implement that legacy that I tried to bring over there with a lot of help from a lot of other individuals. It was my baby, but I couldn't have done it without the board, I couldn't have done it without the Technology Committee. And I couldn't have done it without the superintendents helping us to implement that plan. I want to thank all of you guys for the award because it means a great deal to me to get something like this from you guys. And I'm just extremely excited that everything is working and you guys are moving forward with learning so that we can achieve that goal of excellence being our standard and try to achieve that blue ribbon school. So I am totally proud of you guys, keep up the good work, you know, if you guys ever need me for anything, I'm always here for you guys, and I love you guys and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Dr. Jackson?
Our next honoree is Mayor Katrina Thompson.
Mayor Thompson, are you there?
I, I am.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Dr. Jackson, would you like to begin?
Absolutely. I had the pleasure of meeting Mayor Thompson during my first back-to-school parade at Lindop. She smiled and just said, "It's nice to meet you, glad to know I can help you in any way." That was just the beginning of a mutually beneficial relationship, and everything that she spoke about doing has been evidence. Just to name a few things, she birthed into a dream and turned it into reality. Our children are going to be able to have virtual sidewalks, additional library books, she does adopt the classroom, Operation North Pole, staff appreciation. Has introduced us at a different level to the Erickson Institute and most recently the McGraduation for our eighth graders. So I am truly grateful and you are so deserving of this award, Mrs. Mayor Thompson, thank you.
Well, it's, I don't know if it's my turn to talk.
Ms. Thompson, I mean, Mayor Thompson, no it is not. Would there be any other board members that would like to say something to Mayor Thompson before she says some words, before she is?
Yes. Yes, I would, this is Tanya Taylor.
Right ahead, Tanya.
Mayor Thompson, I just want to give our gratitude, our thanks for your continued support to the community, to our school, to the children of Lindop. Thank you, that goes so far, but I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of all our hearts, thank you.
Okay.
I would like to say a word to the mayor. This is Board Secretary Cheryl Griffin. I want to say that to the best of my knowledge, I had, was not aware of there being a collaboration between the mayor's office and Lindop School. But witnessing it with you has been a true pleasure and to see you as being a complete leader by actually coming in, by partnering with the school. And there has been great improvements as far as helping the school, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Yeah, this is Vicky Arrington. And I also am always pleased because not only did you support all the things or implemented some of the items mentioned by Dr. Jackson. You also show up for programs, school sporting events, and I, your level of involvement is just, is amazing in how you support the children. So we greatly appreciate that, thank you.
Mayor Thompson, this is Carla Joiner-Harrett, Board President. I want you to know you stand out in regards to any mayor we had in this history of Broadview, in my opinion. You paved your own way, and it's gonna be hard for anybody to follow behind you, by the way. And as other board members, as well as Dr. Jackson, thank you so much for the support you've given the school community, as well as this board president. You've encouraged me, as well as students have guided me, so that I could, so we can impact this district in a different way. So, thank you so much for supporting this particular person as well, this is school, I just want to thank you so much. And we want to let you know that you appreciate everything you do.
Okay.
Hey, this is Board Member Hannah. Mayor Thompson, I just want to say thank you for everything that you do, not only for the community, but most definitely for Lindop School. Like everyone has already stated, thank you for all of your involvement, for your hands in everything, the collaborations, it's greatly appreciated.
Mayor Thompson, this is Board Member Penny Williams Wolford. I just, like I've said to you repeated times throughout this pandemic, if there's any mayor I would want to be my mayor in the middle of this crisis, it's you. I thank you so much for how you listen to the students, they wrote you a letter, I hear from you, and about the 3D sidewalks. And you just didn't say, "Oh, that sounds like a great idea." You went forth to try to find the money to make it happen. So, and I just love the fact that how you've embraced all the schools in Broadview, but specifically Lindop's, how you wrapped your arms around the teachers and have given so much. And as others have said, I've never seen such a thing happen from the mayor's office to the school district, and I just love it. Thank you, thank you, thank you, I'm grateful for all that you do for our students in our community, thank you.
This is Board Member Brian Dawson, I too just want to say thank you, not, not just for your commitment to Lindop, but your leadership. Leadership goes a long way during times of crisis, and you really find out people's true character and how it's tested. And I just want to say that not only have you been beneficial to the neighborhood, but just each and every individual who sees you coming out front, speaking up, always letting people know where you stand on the issues, being so passionate, not just about the children, but about the neighborhood. It really lights a fire under a lot of the residents and helps them understand that during times of crisis, we have a mayor who cares. Thank you for being a progressive forward thinker, and also, I guess most importantly, just for putting the kids first and letting them see how passionate you are about education, because that's very important.
Mayor Thompson, I think that's all of us. So if you'd like to say a few words, please do.
Thank you, Madam President, and to the board members, the Board of Education, I'm just emotional. Because it's a thankless job. It is. But it's a hard job when you gotta fight amongst your own people. That's not visionaries. Broadview is a unique community. We are a balanced community, we have resources that the surrounding communities don't have, we have industrial, commercial, and we have our resident base. And I've been involved with Broadview a very long time, I worked at Lindop, I worked at the Park District, I was a park commissioner, I was on the library board. And whatever the mayors, because I've worked with two different mayors, the Seneca and Jones', whatever they asked me to do that I can help, I always wanted to implement their vision for the community. But I always stood for what was right. And I will continue to stand for what was right. Broadview is a unique community that have a lot of progressive ways that we can show the other surrounding towns how to embrace love and just do a thankless job. And not make it personal or about yourself, it's never about me, it's about how we elevate our community to be the best black African-American community that we can be in this moment. So I'm grateful for the war making a difference because sometimes it seemed like nothing is moving, the needle is not moving. And the conversations are hard, and we becoming a very diverse community, so we want to embrace our Latino community. Because our, the dynamics of the community is changing, and it's about all people, it's not just about the black community, it's about how we live and work and play together. And that's very challenging with some individuals that have their own personal agendas. I'm passionate about education because I grew up poor. And my mother didn't have the means that I'm able to afford for my daughter or my nieces. And so I want to make sure that our kids have the best education that our tax dollars can afford. And just like Andrew said, you know, with the technology piece, that's such a huge component to the educational, but we can't leave out the reading, and that's my platform. Leaders are readers, and I make sure that our kids have books in the classroom that they can have. Some kids don't even have libraries at home, but they want to read. My passion and Board Member Wolford can attest to this, when, even when I worked at Lindop, I worked with the kids that had autism, her son and, I forgot the other young man's name. But they used to help me in the office put packets together and the flyers together.
Miller.
Because they, Miller, yep, Miller, they would help me in the office put the flyers together, like count them out. And so the kids would run them, and one of the students from seventh or eighth grade would walk with them to deliver the flyers to the classrooms that had to get to the hands of the parents. So I've always had that passion about those that was impacted with autism, because Adrian and Miller, they gave that to me. That this is something that we have to embrace to be inclusive to all kids, not just a certain group of kids, but all kids have an opportunity to be educated and learn from one another. So they gave me that platform of disabilities and autism in the school and IEPs and paying attention to how our kids get railroaded on a lot of educational opportunities. So I thank those parents for giving me that, giving their kids to me and that ability. Then I go over to the Park District, and we have to give our young kids opportunities. So I created the Junior Camp Counselor Program. They're not old enough to work, but they're old enough to volunteer. And once they volunteer for us, we made sure when they was age, meet the age requirements to work a job, I gave all of those kids jobs at Broadview Park District. A lot of people don't even know that, but I gave those kids jobs. Broadview was the first park district that had an all-black certified lifeguard for the Broadview Park District swimming pool. Our kids deserve to have the same opportunity that any other culture have, that's gonna put them in a position where they can make a livable wage when they become adults. And many of those young people that worked during those summer times graduated from college, they either in the military, they had sergeant status in the military, they doing very well as young adults. We even have one that's a board member at the Lindop School District, Lindop School District, Anna Hannah, he was part of that. But it's because we believed in giving our kids opportunities and not picking and choosing who got the job, but we made sure Broadview kids had jobs at the Park District. Even when sometimes they would get on me about the budget, the money will come, that's all I can say. But our kids deserve to be in a safe haven, learning some workforce to learn how to be professional and how to deal with supervisors, even in your differences. But God has elevated me to be in a position of, I didn't know how much power the mayor really did have, I didn't, I was just here to serve and unite our community and make us stronger together when we work together. And now I realize the power that I have is to unite all of us together to deliver a good product for our residents. So when they talk to their friends or their family members that don't live in the village of Broadview, they talk about how good our village is, and that makes me happy. But it's a hard job because of the outside influences that instigate in the good things that we're doing. Lindop, you guys doing a good job, and I see blue ribbon status, I just see it, I don't know when it's coming, but it's coming real soon under the leadership of Dr. Jackson and her administrators. You guys got a good team, it's solid. They are about the kids, they about the business, they about embracing partnerships and collaborations and working with the other tax embodies and working with our local businesses and embracing the residents that want to come in and volunteer as parents, you see it. People are excited about the school. So I just want to say thank you for the award, I'm just emotional, I've been emotional all day thinking about making a difference, what, you know, it's a thankless job. It is. So, I appreciate it, the recognition, I do sincerely. But we in it together, so whatever I could do to help, I'm gonna always be on the front line to make sure that you guys have the resources that you need, opportunities that's available. With the $25,000 that you all have, they gonna do the sidewalks, I got excited about that. And I called IDOT right away and the engineers to see if we could pull it off, and God just blessed us with $50,000 to spend however I wanted to spend. So Lindop got $25,000, Triton College got $15,000, and they made a scholarship in my name, Mayor Katrina Thompson Scholarship for Broadview residents that want to get an education at Triton College. And so we're gonna be launching that soon. And then the answer Inc. got $10,000 for those diverse learners to be able to get tutoring, they have IEPs. Maybe they don't have autism or Down syndrome, but they got an IEP and they need some additional assistance. So she'll be working with Roosevelt School in the Broadview Park District to implement those things. But it just pleases me that I'm in a position to help, and that makes me feel good. So thank you guys, I appreciate the award, I really do.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson, thank you so much.
Okay. Yes, and next on our list is Representative Emanuel Chris Welch. I can start that one off. I had the pleasure of meeting Chris in 2001 during my tenure in Bellwood School District 88. Chris taught me the critical nature of conducting employee investigations and hearings. And while sitting on his committee for the provisional township to establish PMSA, the importance of eminent domain. And so he has been a constant teacher, and most recently bringing an awareness to fitness to Lindop, Get Ready, Get Set, Get Fit yearly. And he's always calling to see how he can help, let us know what support that we may need, and always. that we may need and always being eyes and ears for grant funding as well as additional legislation that's coming down so that we can always be at the forefront. He could not be here this evening with us, but he did want us to know that he was thankful for the award.
Would any board members like to say anything? He might be, this is on videotape, so he'll probably get this recording. Were there any, any board members, would they like to make any comments regarding Representative Chris Welch?
This is Tanya Taylor. Yes, I would. So Chris, I hope you're listening. We just want to say thank you as a board. I'm sure sentiments are expressed truly that we really appreciate the time that you have given the community and also Lindup School. Thanks.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes, I would like to say that his participation in the events at Lindup has been very, very much appreciated. And it was something that I personally had not witnessed before, that type of interaction with the school, with a representative. And that we always look forward to this relationship continuing. And I see nothing but positive things coming from it. Thank you.
I, I share the sentiments of my colleagues here. Thank you for your support, Representative Welch. And for your great professionalism, no matter what setting I see you and you just, you stand out in a crowd. On how you carry yourself, your concern, your dedication, and your commitment. We thank you so much that Lindup benefits from your great support.
This is Board Member Penny Williams-Wolfer. Yes, State Representative Chris Welch has been awesome in our community. And as I have shared with him during this pandemic as well, I really appreciated his leadership going forward. Saying that we needed another hospital, considering what we were going through and really making it happen. And just being our voice in Springfield is what we need because oftentimes it's just looked over and especially communities that have black individuals that live in those communities and people of color. And I just appreciate his unwavering leadership and the roles that he played to make sure that we get everything that we need in our communities. And appreciate his ongoing communication with the community weekly. Normally does it not as often, but then it became daily almost, just to keep us up to date. And I just really appreciate that. Those are the type of leaders that we need during these difficult times and in the midst of a crisis that'll speak up on our behalf and make those things happen for our community. So thank you.
There any more board members?
Board Member Brian Dawson, I just wanted to also say thank you. Thank you for being a steadfast advocate for not only our community, but Lindup in particular, you know, being such a small district. We could easily be looked over, but just, we just want to say thank you for always keeping Lindup on your radar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Hannah, excuse me, Board Member Hannah, Representative Welch, just want to say thank you for everything that you're doing for Lindup. It's greatly appreciated. Yeah, that's all I can say. Thank you.
This is Carly Jordan-Harris. Just wanted to to say I've seen Representative Welch grow from 2009 Board President. He stood stoic and that was such a difficult job. And then we got the position as a state rep to see his growth and his transition. And to see how he fought for the state of Illinois during those times we didn't have budgets and he was so outspoken, you know, fearless. During the times that like for several years we didn't have a budget. He fought relentlessly for all, all the people in this and under his, really for the state of Illinois. And I'm not sure if you all know, he's always stood for Lindup. He's always providing information, you know, to the community, but he also is supportive behind the scenes. And I so appreciate, he's always willing to, he might see something that happens and he's a personable person that'll call you and offer advice or at, just let, he'll just let you know he's, he's there if you, if you need him. And that's really outstanding for someone that has a family and has a position that he does. He takes the time to, to communicate that he cares. So just so proud to have him as our representative and thank him for everything he's done for our school as well.
I think that concludes our awards for the night. Dr. Jackson?
That concludes the awards for tonight.
Thank you, everyone. Are there any public comments?
There are none.
There are none. Moving right on to FOIA request. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we had a FOIA request submitted from Jonathan Fag asking about how our attendance there during remote learning. We did gather all the evidence and send that to him. The FOIA request has been satisfied. And our average attendance was about 90% throughout grade levels K through eight.
Thank you. Upcoming events and correspondence. And I see there are none. Is there any correspondence at all? None? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving right along to new business. As you can see, the consent agenda has been removed from our agenda. It just seemed to be very effective, so we decided to just have each motion individually read. So we'll begin. I would like to make the motion to approve the Lindup School District 92 payroll for May 2020 in the amount of $1,044,546.20. I need a second, please. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams-Wolfer?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan-Harris?
Yay.
You.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the activity account reconciliation for May 2020.
I make, I make a motion to approve, excuse me, for approval of activity account reconciliation for May 2020.
And a second, please.
A second, Vicky.
Any discussion? And roll call, please.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams-Wolfer?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan-Harris?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve the accounts payable, please.
I make a motion that the board approve the Lindup District 92 accounts payable for May 20, for May 2020 in the amount of $198,777.42. This is Vicky Arrington.
And a second, please.
I second the motion.
Cheryl Griffin? Any discussion? There is none. Roll call, please.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams-Wolfer?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan-Harris?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
One more. Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve the regular open mini meeting minutes for May, please.
I make a motion to, for the approval of the regular open session meeting minutes for May 19th, 2020.
And a second, please.
A second, Vicky Arrington.
Any changes or revisions? If there are none, any roll call, please.
Board Member Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams-Wolfer?
Epstein.
Board Member Jordan-Harris?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Hey.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. A motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes for May 19th, please.
I make a motion that the board approve the regular closed session meeting minutes for May 19th, 2020, Board Vice President Vicky.
And a second, please.
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Any discussion or changes? There are none. Roll call, please.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams-Wolfer?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan-Harris?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion carrying. Okay, thank you very much. Discussion on plans for reentry into the 2021 school year. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, good evening again. And so first I'd like to just say thank you to the board for being so supportive during this time and also to the administrative team, the amount of work that has been done has been remarkable and no one has said anything else other than what else can we do? How can we help? What do you need? So thank you all very, very much and not just our building administration. I'm talking about the district leadership team, which is comprised of district administrators, building administrators, teachers, union, all coming together to work collaboratively. So thank you all for that. As we know, we've been in remote learning for a little while now. And we are currently in Phase Three. The Illinois State Board of Education did come out with some guidance to let us know that we needed to, if we wanted to have summer school, which we had already begun, that it would have to be sort of a model where they could be on campus if you would like for the students to be on campus, but they would have to be no more than 10 students. Lindup, we had already begun and June 1st, this came out maybe the second week in June, giving us that direction. We're now waiting for Phase Four where we, there will be partial school openings. Guidance parameters, we'll still continue the breakfast and lunch distribution, the electronic device distribution. And also we know that in Stage Four, they are going to allow up to 50 individuals within one space. So that will be changing. Next slide. And so you all have noticed in our weekly reports that we've been talking about the things that we've been working on. And so the large project that we've worked on now has been our reentry program. And so our reentry program has a lot of conversation between the district leadership team that often goes out and shares it with the rest of the faculty and staff and just garnering input. What we are looking at, and this is still just a draft and just to let you all know where our heads are with this, we're looking at two models. One would be the traditional learning model and the other would be the remote learning model. So for the traditional model, if you look, you'll see a little graphic with social distancing in the classrooms. So that would be small in-person classes. We'd have activities and events only per the governor's order. We expect to be in Stage Five possibly by the time school scheduled to resume or at least have some firm guidance on this. The team has been very busy and I won't go into that here because we have another slide where they'll be able to tell you exactly what they've done in their different subcommittees. But some things that we've been talking about was possible temperature checks, how the cleaning and disinfecting practices will be continued. Groups of students, if they'll stay together and the same teacher going throughout the school days and groups do not mix. Students remain at least six feet apart and finally, students and staff stay home if they're feeling sick or quarantine if exposed to someone who tested positive for the COVID-19. Some of the pros and cons are obviously our familiar setting for the students and even if we, as we look to make changes and invite them back hopefully for the upcoming year, either remotely or traditionally with social distancing. It will be something familiar. They will be able to have that social interaction that they are desperately missing. The social emotional support will be more readily available to them just because it will be in person. The team does a dynamic job now contacting the students to make sure that everyone's mental well-being is still intact. And also they'll be able to have some face-to-face interactions. Some of the cons are the risk of exposure for COVID-19, potential two-week quarantine if symptomatic, and staffing and unknown factors. Our next model is remote learning and in that setting, it's the same as we are evidencing now with the students and the teachers, they engage in virtual-only classes, activities, and events. And so some of the pros and cons of this has been, the pros would be the lowest risk to exposure and focused learning. Some of the cons, limited social emotional support, limited face-to-face interaction, learning styles, and as well as caretaker educational support. And so if you go to the next slide, our committee is made up, as I told you before, of administrators, teachers, and union. I would like to have them to just go through and let you know the purpose of their department, what they've worked on and sort of this entire process will begin with Mr. Whitehead, followed by Dr. Spalding for school site leadership, then Dr. Best for curriculum instruction and technology, Mr. Ballantyne and Mr. Baranek Buildings and Grounds, and then I will close off with the parent community feedback. Followed by Mrs. DeGraff and Ms. Johnson as union co-presidents for the support staff as well as the teachers' union. Go ahead, Mr. Whitehead.
Good evening, Board of Education. So the Special Services Subcommittee covers health services, our English learners program along with our pre-K, early childhood program and special education along with McKinney-Ventle homeless students. So the purpose of our committee was to make sure that we were, one, either maintaining the level of support that we could previously. And then also as we look into reentry, what is that support going to look for, all those different departments? It was great to have Ms. James, our, our school nurse on board for this, for this portion, you know, our subcommittee because being our healthcare professional, she really has a different scope and optic in terms of what we may see and what we may be thinking about in terms of educators versus my healthcare perspective and she's also networked into a school nurses network that gets that information from the state board of ed and also from the Department of Public Health. With this, we also looked at one ways in which that we would be screening all of our individuals in terms of potential COVID symptoms, signs, along with the temperature checks. Also looking at ways in which we would have to go through with our screenings for the summer or the fall, especially for our pre-K program and also for our English learners, since we may not be in person during that time and how that would work. And if we are in person, how that would work, given some of the healthcare parameters that we would have to look at. The other part is making sure that we have the, the support of our clinicians and our speech and language services, social work, et cetera, and making sure that, that we are, when we return, we're still and making sure that, that we are, when we return, we're still following our same format for our multi-tier system of support identifying students and also identifying the needs that they have. And the process for this is that, as we, we would meet every week and then we each would take a section of, of the, of our programs and then do research in terms of what's out there now, what's best practice, some of the things that are going on, not only nationally but also internationally, bring those back to our group and discuss and then put them into a working document that we could see the progress and some of the tangible resources and then make the necessary changes and upgrades as we got information from the State Board of Education. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Dr. Spalding?
Good evening, Board of Education and to all the administrators and the attendees. So as Dr. Jackson mentioned, I am working with the scheduling committee and that is comprised of myself along with Ms. Rubenstein, Mr. Graff, and Dr. Betts. And we're trying to take a real focused look at developing a best-practice master schedule. So what that means is that if we need to return to the remote learning format, we want to improve what we rolled out this past spring. Teachers experienced a ton of success and there were also opportunities for improvement. And we have got those ideas primarily from parents, and Dr. Jackson will talk a little bit more about that. But we're incorporating some of those suggestions into planning if we need to return to a full remote schedule. If we are able to have some students back on campus or rotate the student body in some way to a master's schedule on campus, we want to also improve that. I think one of the common themes that we've heard from different colleagues across the state is that the remote instructional window has been full of a lot of challenges, but at the same time, it has been an opportunity to do some of those things that maybe people were uncomfortable doing while on campus. And so we want to push those best-practice ideas and push learning conditions for our students and thinking opportunities and thematic units and a lot of planning that can be enhanced. You know, the saying is that we do not want to return to business as usual. It would be, you know, less than ideal, once we've stretched our wings and discovered new territory, no one wants to go back to business as usual. And so that's one of the goals of the master's schedule is to find ways to really allow students to have more choice, things that interest them more, and also really building upon teachers and their skill sets and things that they might not be able to do presently with the current schedule. How can we explore some of their talents in a different way that still aligns with standards and is best practice and forward about skill sets that our students need to not just be employees but to be entrepreneurs even. And so we're working hard around plugins, which is a tool that we can insert into our power school system to build a different type of master schedule. And so we meet at least twice a week to discuss those options and in addition to trying to build that, we know we need to garner feedback from our stakeholders and so a series of surveys will be conducted so that we can make sure we're incorporating some of that feedback before any final decisions are made about on-campus or remote instruction. Are there any questions?
I do, I was, I was gonna wait probably until after everyone presents because some of the answers may be already given at that time.
Dr. Betts?
Good evening, Board of Education, Administration, and Staff. I am working with the Curriculum Instruction Assessment and Technology Subcommittee, which includes me, Mr. Ellisky, Ms. Schoenhyder, Ms. Atwood, and Ms. Ortiz. And the purpose of our committee is to formalize some of the innovations that we've discovered during the remote learning window and to be able to bring those back into the building when we physically return to campus. And our process has been that we meet regularly and then we kind of assign each other tasks and we walk away and get those done. We come back with the research, we review things together, and then we, we just continue to meet. It's kind of a process of continuous improvement. And some of the tasks that we've been tackling are how we can maintain a positive use of instructional technology for collaboration and modeling thinking instead of using it for isolation on learning apps. But how can it bring us together? And then other things have to do with our small group instruction and how we can incorporate our entire instructional staff from teachers to paraprofessionals into small group routines that we have in our classrooms. Are there any questions?
Okay, and lastly, we have the parent community feedback. And so the purpose of this is to gather stakeholder input from families, staff, and students, as Dr. Spalding mentioned earlier. She began the parent coffees a few weeks ago and it was, it has been phenomenal, just having parents to be able to share with one another, to be able to ask questions, to just really see the complexity in making a decision like this, but seeing that we are all united and working together with it has been phenomenal. We are going to be asking some additional questions for the families and trying to go over this, doing this actual presentation that we're having for you this evening and just sharing the different models just to see what would work with them and then having them to complete a short survey so that we can receive and disaggregate all of the data to make sure that the decisions that we're making are going to be most beneficial for our families. So some of the tasks have been the parent coffees. The process has been really to debrief after those to see what we can go back with, receiving instant feedback right away. Some of the, the parents were discussing if they had, or articulating if they had any concerns with device pickup or if they love device pickup or with the lunches. They are very, very appreciative and this is just another way to have their input. And next, we want to hear from, and I know we're going to come back to questions afterwards, but I'd like to get Mrs. DeGraff, who will be representing the LTA and then Mrs. Johnson, who is representing the support staff.
And you're gonna talk about facilities too, right?
Right past it, thank you so much, Mrs. Harris.
Maybe after this one then?
No, so yes, so facilities, please, Mr. Ballantyne, Mr. Baranek.
Good evening, Board of Education, Camille, yes, staff. With the Buildings and Grounds Committee, committee, the working Mr. Baranek and Mr. Canovia and Dr. Spalding. We pretty much have been monitoring all CDC and IDPH guidelines for sanitizing and disinfecting the campus. We also been looking at classroom sizes so we can kind of pin down how many students that would be able to allow to each classroom per social distance guidelines. And we also been looking at health screening options where we would probably be installing devices at entry doors where we would be able to monitor temperatures as people enter the building. And also just trying to stockpile all necessary disinfectants and sanitizers since everything is on back order. So we want to have everything ready and available in the fall. Any questions?
I would just like, I'd like to just chime in before there are some questions. Mr. Ballantyne has done a good job stockpiling the PPE. We have, you know, several hundred disposable face masks, he has dispensers in different places, additional hand sanitizer. He did order five temperature readers that you can scan on people's foreheads to get the temperatures before entry. So we're trying to get ahead of the game with this. I'm also working with our insurance company. They are putting out different documentation about reentry to work and what are best practices on it. So I am going over all the information that they have with that and sharing it with Mr. Ballantyne. And then also, I'm working closely with our food service just as things are coming out from the state as to how the lunch program would look. I'm informing Karen Winters and Ann Smith with the changes that are out there, but as it looks like currently, it would be lunch in the, breakfast and lunch in the classrooms.
Thank you all, Mrs. DeGraff.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson, Board of Education, and all community and staff members and attendants this evening. First and foremost, on behalf of the Lindop Teachers Association, I would like to thank school and district leadership under the guidance and direction of Dr. Jackson for including LTA leadership seamlessly into all the comprehensive planning opportunities that have taken place and continue to take place since we've left campus in March. The purpose of including union leadership was to ensure that we were continuing to provide high-quality learning opportunities for our students while balancing the needs of our families, community, and staff during the COVID-19 pandemic. We have heard horror stories from other area locals who have not had the same level of union management partnership and it is unfortunately the students and their learning which suffers. Believe me when I say Lindop's commitment to working together to meet the needs of the students, of the community, and of our staff during the mandated school closures has truly been and continues to be commendable. Our commitment to the Lindop community and to each other is evidenced by our work over the last few years, which successfully laid the groundwork for a smooth transition to remote learning this spring. Through our continued partnership, we move forward together in creating a solid plan for reentry. This includes honoring teacher voice and diversity of perspective while we continue to plan despite so many uncertainties and unknowns in our future. We've enjoyed the opportunity to work together with administration on all the subcommittees to intentionally plan for the safe return of students and staff while maintaining equitable access to a quality education, regardless of our learning platform, in-person or remote, for all our students this fall. Please know all our members are fully committed to bringing meaningful learning opportunities to all students when school opens this fall. We are and continue to be Lindop proud, we can't wait to see where our future takes us together. Thank you.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes, hi, good evening to everyone. I just want to thank everyone who is present, the board, the administration, the families and community members. And from LSSA, I just want to say thank you to administration for including us in the DLT meetings since the stay-at-home order went into place. It has been an enlightening experience, I want to say. All the hard work that goes into behind the scenes that people don't know. Just should be really proud of the staff that we have at Lindop. LSSA has a lot of talent and and so we're thankful that you're allowing us to, to use that and thank you to the board for also supporting us as well. There's been a lot of conversation and research and phone calls that have been going on, trying to prepare for reentry and that work continues.
Paraprofessionals, they have their duty-free lunch. So I do know as we go through the process of trying to create a master schedule on that and how it will work and when we get more guidance, we'll have more clear guidelines as to how things would work. And as of right now, I don't think that there would need to be additional staff at it as long as there is a flexible schedule to have the food distributed to the classrooms during the upcoming school year.
And, and the beauty of this is that all of the teams come together and we are able to share that, but that's an ongoing conversation. And as we have more guidance from IDPH and it's, and we know about the actual numbers, we'll be able to give you some additional information. But right now, it's just still a work in progress.
Yeah, this is Carla Gurney here, I do have a question about the social distancing inside classrooms. Is there enough space to social distance and have everyone in there? I can understand why they can eat in the classroom, it's probably, you know, it's a controlled environment, it's probably easier to control the kids probably in a classroom than even in a cafeteria because you have the same kids and you, you know, if, if you have an orderly classroom, it'll probably be consistent with, you know, the classroom environment. But my question, is there enough room in a classroom to even have social distance? Distancing, and that's my first question, and then of course, they'll have to wear masks the entire day, correct? Everybody has to wear masks the entire day of, if, if we decide to be in the classroom. Those, those are my first two questions.
Mr. Ballantyne, would you like to talk about the measuring of the desks that you did and in the rooms?
Sure, Dr. Jackson, yeah, so we kind of looked at some of the classrooms and see if we had to do some alterations to them, let's try to maximize them out to see how many students we can get to them. Some classrooms varies with the sizes. So right now, we had an average of 16 or 20 students per row. That, we probably gonna have to do some alterations as I have to go, kind of like removing area rugs and things like that. So that's where we at with that, but we still kind of trying to map that out.
Doctor, everybody will have to wear masks, correct, throughout the entire day while they're in school, period, correct?
Yes, ma'am, they will, everyone will have to wear masks. And we are also discussing our mode of distribution of masks and what we will have as a backup if masks are lost, so that's still be in the process of having a conversation. So Dr. Jackson, this will be reusable mask or will they be daily disposable mask?
Mr. Baranek?
At this particular time, we were thinking to have the washable masks for maybe X amount of number given to the students so that they would have potentially four to five masks, which then the expectation would be is the parent would have to wash them. And then if they did not bring their mask to school that day, we would have disposable masks available upon entry to school.
Do you have any CDC guidelines regarding masks in, in schools, is there any type of data on that? Because I know that you really want to ensure that they, I don't know, any, any informational recommendations from, from, in regards to that, I know you guys have, I know that the, the state chair has talked a lot about, you know, the transition back. Just curious, you had any feedback on that?
The CDC had with IDPH and the stuff that came out, they recommend the cloth masks out there, the reusable ones. But there again, like you said, the, the big thing on that one would have to be, we need to ensure that, you know, they're being washed each night or they bring a different mask each day and that they have enough during the course of the school week on it. They don't have anything as far as what type of numbering, you know, if they're KN95s or N95s or just a disposable mask, they just said face coverings. And I know the cloth ones are much more comfortable. So that's probably the direction that I think we should kind of go down is that, you know, having the more comfort, the main thing is, is that we just stop the spread of any particles that come out of any student's mouth, plus then it also stops anybody from particles getting into anyone that's covered with the mask. But as guidance come out, comes out, we'll continue to keep monitoring it.
And the reason why I asked is because a lot of times the cloth masks are, are warmer and thicker. The paper ones are more easily, you can breathe it easy, more breathe through it easier, more easy, easier it seems. You know, it seems like your, the air flows better, although it's not the most attractive mask in the world, but maybe it just depends on what type of material you have even for the cloth, that's what I was just thinking about, but, you know, I'm sure we'll get to that point. And my, my, my last question was, when you make the decision, team, Dr. Jackson, when, when you make the decision about what direction the district will go? When, when's your timeline to make the decision if we're gonna do, you know, more remote? Or I know you talked about a hybrid or if they're coming back inside, when will you make that decision?
Right, and so our first, our next step is to meet with the parents, we'll have a big meeting on Saturday to share this information. We'll also share a survey with them. In the meantime, the union will be working with the teachers to give that same survey because our plan is only as good as if there are people to serve. And we have to find out how many of our staff may be in situations where they would not be able to return to school. And so as soon as we gather that And so as soon as we gather that information, we're looking to have something back at the next board meeting with a recommendation. But we would be reporting out during the Friday reports and being able to answer any questions that we might have. We don't think that it'll take long. The forum sets up. It's nice. I had thought about doing something one-on-one. And then after looking at the amount of families, it would probably not be, it would be time prohibitive to do that. And so we are going to garner all of the information, but we're gonna have it targeted and focused based upon the presentation that we're giving tonight, and then we'll have that information. So we're looking no later than I would say about the middle of July.
Are there any more questions from any other board members? Thank you very much. We're gonna move right along to the next topic, discussion on the updated board book. That's Mr. Lescue.
Good evening, everybody. So Board Book requires all school districts to upgrade a Board Book premier. The current version of Board Books being returned on June 30th of this year. The Board Book premier upgrade is free. The Board Book premier upgrade will look different, but has more features. It's kind of like buying a new car 10 years ago. The car, if you buy a car today, it's got more features than it did 10 years ago. We will also provide a short training video created by Board Book for you. Mr. Lescue, myself, will be doing training on July 20th for any board members that require additional training. If you'd like to have an earlier training day, please let me know. It's just, you pick July 20th because the new agenda is gonna be posted then for you to see it. And then we'll put updates included in the weekly informational checklist. Board Book will require reset of usernames and passwords, or you can still use your current password. This is kind of what Board Book looks like. So when you're live in Board Book, you can, you'll be able to see that motion's passed, and you'll be able to see what motion by which board members voted. So what was first and second to motion? You'll also be able to see how board members voted too, once it's saved in the system live during the board meeting in July. And this is kind of how Board Book's gonna look. On the left side, you're gonna have your extras over here, and then your public notice, extras are where your presentation's gonna be, quick view, you familiar with that? And then the agendas is so-and-so for public notices. Publish means that it's public live, and review means it's being still reviewed by administration. It's not public yet. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Lescue. Okay, next on the agenda, recommend, a recommendation to approve 110 Chromebooks. I need a recommendation, please. Ms. Taylor?
Yes, I can make the recommendation. Let's hear it. We are on number eight, right? Making a,
Yes.
I make a motion that the board approves the purchase of 110 Chromebooks at a cost of $36,582.70, insurance for four years at a cost of $14,359.40, for a total cost of $50,942.10.
In a second, please.
That's Ann Vicki Arrington.
Okay, Dr. Jackson. Mr. Lescue?
So we're recommending the purchase of 110 Chromebooks with insurance, which covers for four years of insurance. This is to be able to provide students with working devices upon the return to school in the event that any case, any devices don't come back in working condition. Devices are being shipped from China and tariffs are slowing down the imports. So it's very hard to get devices because of COVID-19 because many school districts have been unable to locate devices for purchase because every school's pretty much doing this. It takes a long time to repair the devices. And due to social distancing requirements for remote learning, devices can be purchased with CARES funds. As of June 5th, Chromebooks are on back order until September 2020. Lindop's order request was placed in April, so we were prethinking, and ours arrived in June of 2020. So this is a breakdown of what it covers, four years of insurance with a $0 deductible, which includes accidental damage, liquid damage, theft, vandalism, power surge, natural disasters, mechanical failure, and breakdown. And this is, this is a breakdown of what the insurance cost per unit and the total of $50,942.10. Any questions?
Did you say, what did you say about ours came in June?
We were forward-thinking and pre-ordered them, so we would be able to have them prior, so we'd be able to have in case we, before, if we didn't order them like now, we wouldn't have until September 20th, September of 2020. So we're forward-thinking.
Are there any additional questions? If there are none, roll call, please.
Board member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Board member Jonah Harret?
Yay.
Board member Arrington?
Yay.
Board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Hannah?
Yay.
Board member Taylor?
Absolutely, yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve the increase for the substitute daily rate, please.
I make a motion, I recommend approval to increase the substitute daily rate from 105 to 125, and the long-term substitute rate from 125 to 175 after 10 consecutive days.
In a second, please.
Time your tail last second.
Dr. Jackson?
This is Mr. Baranek.
Right ahead, Mr. Baranek.
Okay, good evening once again. I know at the last board meeting, Mrs. Wilford asked for two additional districts to get their subrates on it. I was able to get those. It was Maywood 89 came in at 130 and 160 for their daily rate and long-term rate, and then Kamart came in at 125 for daily rate, and then 22680 after 15 consecutive days. And if they missed the day, the 15 days started over. By this increase up to 125, it puts us right in the same ballgame with 209, Ilseide, and all the other districts that we're competing against. And once again, this was just to try to be competitive, to be able to lock in subs for the following school year. I know it's gonna be probably a hot commodity again next year. There's gonna still be a shortage with it, and definitely with the return to school, I don't know how large the subpool's gonna be. But like I said, this would make Lindop more attractive by increasing the rate from 105 to 125, and then the long-term rate from 125 to 175.
We have any questions? Okay, go right ahead. Mr. Baranek, you have more to discuss?
No, that was just another diagram showing what the recommendation would be to increase the rate for the 2021 school year.
Hey, are there any other questions from any board members?
I have a comment. This is our board member Brian Dawson. Just not so much a question. I do understand that we have raised the rate. I do think, however, that in light of COVID, I think that we may very possibly find ourselves in a race with other districts to find subs because there may be some teachers at the beginning of the school year who might have a little trepidation about coming back. And if, I know that we had talked about paying X amount of dollars for the, I think it was a temp agency that we had, and even their half-days, I think, were almost the same as that 130 a day. We may have to consider raising that rate up to be more competitive and even appealing, as you say. We might even have to go as high as 135 if we've only got four or five subs and everyone's looking for subs because teachers are, you know, a little scarce. So it's, like I said, it's not a question, it's more a comment and maybe just kind of thinking about that because we may find ourselves in the first couple of weeks of school where we're a little shorthanded. That's it.
Yeah. This is like, this is a year of, like a year of a white page. We don't know what's gonna happen. And I'm sure people are gonna be afraid, and there's no vaccine yet. So even at my job, everybody's very worried about coming back together and afraid of infection. But every district is gonna have that same challenge, and I'm sure there're gonna be shortages. And I'm sure there's gonna be plenty of people who will need, for any districts that'll need substitutes probably. But the question is, how much can we go up? You know, we'll always have that other, Dr. Jackson, any comments? I know you always have that other staffing agency in your back pocket, right?
Yes, we do. And Mr. Baranek has already spoken to them, fully staffed, but then again, it also goes with the demand. Mr. Baranek also did some, you know, looking around and comparisons with the other districts and wanted to make sure that we were competitive. But I do understand both parts, and if the board is willing to go up a little bit, that would be helpful. But we need to make sure also what the impact is going to be with the budget.
Any other board members have any comments?
Yeah, this is board member Williams Wilford. I just actually thought about this question as I said here as we're talking about it. And I'm just wondering, how often do we need subs more than 10 days? Subs, I'm imagining is typically due to either birth of a child or some type of surgery or things of that nature, FMLA. I'm just wondering, how often do we use that in addition to just wondering how many times per year do we use individual subs? And I guess the third question is just to broaden my knowledge. When we say 10 days, does that mean 10 consecutive days for the same classroom? Or does that mean if we've used that sub anytime on the, starting on the 11th day that school year? Is that when the sub would get paid the higher rate? I'm just curious.
So yes, Mrs. Wilford, you were correct. Most of our long-term subs are for the birth of a child or if someone has a long-term illness or something like that. So we don't have a lot of them. However, we also have some, some people who may be out, and so we were also trying to account for that. The good thing is that we do have additional peer professionals on staff. They would be allowed to also go into the classrooms and to assist. That's been beefed up. But there is always wise to have more than enough than not enough, and so I would agree with what you're saying.
On a final note, just curious, but once again, I'm hearing too throughout the state that people are really, as board president has identified, you know, people are uncomfortable and kind of concerned about coming back together. Have we did a survey with staff to see if, an anonymous survey, to see how many potential staff members are in the at-risk population? And what are their likelihood of them returning in the fall if we were, if the district were to return to face-to-face? You know, traditional, what we used to know as traditional.
Yes, ma'am. And so before the end of the school year or by, in May, we had a letter of intent that was done by every employee. And they did all say that they would be returning. We do know that some have some special circumstances. But as I mentioned earlier, with the parent surveys and the student surveys, the, both the LSSA and the LTA will also be asking those questions of the staff. And so we will have a good pulse on that as well.
Is there a timeline that they have to submit that information by? Because that's totally out of our control, right? In other words, if they have a medical need, is there, is there any type of issue? In other words, I know in other arenas, if there's a medical need, then they generally are allowed to be remote, but it might be a different situation in schools. You know, that was a great question, Penny. So what do you, any thoughts about that, Dr. Jackson?
Yep, there is a lot of flexibility with that, and there are some new guidelines. And I know Scott has been working with the insurance companies. Scott, you want to speak to some of that?
Yes, per the insurance companies, they have had multiple webinars on returning the work safely. And what kind of accommodations could you make potentially for, you know, staff that could potentially be compromised with health, underlying health issues? Some of the things that they had was if you could do where they could potentially be at home doing lessons and having paraprofessionals kind of in the class doing the onsite stuff, but then the teacher would be doing remote instruction. That was an option on it. I don't know if that would be feasible for Lindop, but that was an option. There was also options that said potentially if you could offer a retirement incentive, and if they do, you know, are near retirement age and could potentially retire without a penalty, maybe the district could offer some sort of incentive. So then, you know, you go out on mutual terms and you could come in and bring in somebody that would be willing to do the in-class teaching. But like you said, this is all just kind of like best practices is what potentially you could do. Things have been changing ultimately weekly with it. They keep saying, okay, put dividers in, offer this to your staff members, the PPE available for them so that they're as comfortable as possible, limit the amount of students potentially on the ones who are compromised. Maybe their class size could be a little less than what some of the other teachers would be. So these are just different options that they've mentioned to try to accommodate those staff members who potentially could be compromised.
Have they thought about, are they installing shields at all, like in the, like the, the walk-in area? You know, when you first walk into the building and you have the secretaries in front? You know, a lot of people have those areas shielded off. It may not, I'm not sure if you've thought about that at all or if that's necessary in our school. Has anybody thought about that?
Absolutely, absolutely. We've thought about that. And Mr. Valentine was looking at some different options. In fact, while we were walking through the building on Monday, looking at the classrooms to see the six feet distancing and they are looking to see how students will be, but then we also have some classrooms that have tables. And we're in the process of looking to see how many other desks we have because with tables where you may be able to have four to six students, you would only be able to have two. And so we are considering that. And also if there had to be any shields, we know that we were talking about for the upstairs, but also in the individual offices. So that is a part of the conversation. Mr. Valentine, I don't know if you had looked any further into that?
Yes, Dr. Jackson, we had looked to the shields. That was partially for those tables that we seen in the primary wing. But the guidelines right now say if you're able to be six feet away, you won't need the shield. So we just looking for areas that where we can't maintain six feet distance, that's where the areas we're looking to possibly install the shield.
Did that answer your question, Mrs. Harret?
Yeah, it did. It kind of got off topic, and I apologize. We're talking about so many different things. So we were on the topic of the substitute. Do we want to raise it, raise it higher? Is that what we're talking about as a board and administration? I know that Mr. Dawson mentioned that. Dr. Jackson, any, any final words about that? Or you all feel like this is a solid recommendation, 125, and we just in a, in a, in a time right now that we really can't predict anything? And I'm not even sure if 135 will make a difference right? And I'm not even sure if 135 will make a difference right now. I would like to. Go right ahead.
My comment would be is that if I'm understanding Dr. Jackson correctly, we have, she's working with a temp service also. So that's gonna give us somewhat, if she has a good rapport with that agency, that's sort of like a contingency plan for us. But for us just to, and keep in mind, this is my thought on it. For us to arbitrarily think that we've got to be able to outbid someone for something and we know that we're not, there's a very good chance that we're not gonna get the funding that we would normally get. To me, that would be just a little bit of putting the horse before the cart.
Board President, Joyner, I think last month, which was the first time I had heard about the cost of the temp service. Did you say it was like $200 a day?
No, it was actually prevented, presented like last year and we talked about this before.
Okay, I probably forgot about them.
Yeah, and it was definitely a large amount and.
It's way more than what we, what we're paying. So it's, it would probably be to our advantage to up the cost versus paying a temp agency, you know?
We, we are, don't forget, going from 105 to 125 that puts us competitive and this other, you know, and this is what the administrative team recommended as well. You think about our school size, it's an advantage as well. But any other feedback from other board members as well? Ms. Arrington?
Vicki Arrington. I right now, I feel that what we've done with the 105 to 125, 125, 175, I just think that's a good start with it. We, we have a lot of unknowns out there. Everything that we're saying is, for now, would just be conjecture. So I think that we could just move forward with what we are recommending, which being recommended. Get birth, as things unfold, we'll know better how to move forward on it.
Ms. Hannah, Ms. Mr. Hannah?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Taylor?
I agree with Ms. Arrington. It's a lot of unknowns at the moment. I think we're competitive. If we need to revisit this and put this back on the agenda for the next board meeting, then I think we can deal with it at that time. Thanks.
Okay. So the motion on the table stands. I think the majority agrees to just go with this daily rate for right now. We can always reassess after probably the school starts because we didn't even know the direction we're gonna go, whether we go remote. That hasn't been decided either. So need a roll call, please. The motion is already on the table.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a recommendation to approve the application for the FEMA grant, please.
I make a motion that the board approve to apply for the FEMA grant, Vicki Arrington.
And a second, please.
Tanya Taylor, a second.
Mr. Baranek?
Okay, good evening, Board and community and staff. The FEMA grant is a public assistance program available for governmental agencies. This is another possible way that potentially the district could get reimbursed for expenses related to COVID-19 costs. It is a 75-25 cost share agreement. Some of the things that the district would have to do in order to just be ready and able to potentially put in for reimbursement for cost. Number one is register the entity within the grant portal. And then have these three different documents, which would be the PA 101, the PA 108, and the PA 109. Those would have to be signed by the Board President and sent into Illinois via the mail for it, which would then just basically make Lindop meet all the requirements to be ready for the FEMA grant. If we move to the next slide, some of the information that I have been receiving from the different webinars that I've been going on to try to figure out what expenses would be allowable, what potentially could be reimbursed. And this is the information that I have currently. Number one, the district would have to spend $3,300 upfront. Anything after that would be a 75-25 cost share. PPE is currently not covered for school districts, but is subject to change. As of right now, I did put a question out on the webinar, you know, why is it not covered? And it says that school districts are not first responders, therefore it would not be covered. So it could be subject to change, but like I said, I'm tracking the PPE expenditures that we have going on currently so far. And I did ask on the webinar, what kind of positions would be covered or what kind of potential salary could be covered? So new positions that were created due to COVID-19 or any overtime for your custodial staff would be allowable. At this particular time, we're not running any overtime for our custodians. So nothing would fall under the overtime allowance and we did not create any new positions to, due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Thermometers for schools are not covered to the date. So I did ask a question about those thermal scanners. Would those be covered? And all I got back from the webinar people was as of this point with FEMA, it is not covered, but could be subject to change. So if we were thinking about doing those thermal scanners, like you said, as of right now, it's not covered, but could potentially. They claim that it was just part of an operational expense. Items eligible under CARES Act should be claimed under CARES Act. The district is getting CARES Act dollars through the state. There is an application that we are entitled to $118,000 for CARES Act dollars that will be used for all of the technology that costs that's related to the remote learning that was done during the school closure. And of course FEMA is a last source of funding. Even though it seems like there's not much that a school district currently right now could get covered with the cost, I still recommend that all the necessary documents are signed by the Board President and they are submitted to IEMA so that this way the district is eligible in case any of the guidance changes and that the costs that we have spent on supplies for cleaning or even the thermos, thermometer readers would be covered. This would at least get us where we're fully meet the requirements to potentially put in for expenses to be reimbursed through FEMA.
Are there any other questions at all? Okay. Okay, the motion is on the table. Need a roll call, please.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, I need a motion to approve the submittal of the district consolidation plan.
To commit the district consolidated plan to the Illinois School Board. For the IASB.
And a second, please.
Tanya Taylor, a second.
Mr. Whitehead?
Good evening, Board of Education. I briefly want to talk about the district consolidated plan. Two years ago, the State Board of Education changed the process for submitting all the grant applications, including our Title I, Title II, Title IV, our EL Title III program, our pre-K program, and also for IDEA Special Education Program. Because typically, all of those programs would submit their goals and their plans separately. So every grant would have their own goals and from the state perspective, it's, it was hard for them to see alignment. So two years ago, they started to ask that these, they created an application where all these grants were put into one application process. And there are three goals that the State Board of Education looks for in these, in these, in these plans. The first one is student learning. The second is learning conditions and the last is educator quality. So this is the second year we've submitted this, this, this plan and it encompasses everything for the upcoming fiscal year that would begin July 1st of 2020. As you can see on the screen, these are all the areas in which that the consolidated plan covers all of our state and federally funded programs and grants.
Are there any questions? There are none. Need a roll call, please. Thank you, Mr. Whitehead.
You're welcome.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Need a recommendation regarding the intergovernmental agreement with West 40, please. Okay, go right ahead.
I recommend approval of an intergovernmental agreement with West 40 Regional Safe School in the amount of $115 per day per student after initial enrollment.
And a second, please.
Tanya Taylor, a second.
And this would be, Dr. Jackson, who's gonna be presenting this? This, Mr. Whitehead or?
No. I'll present. This is Mr. Baranek. On an annual basis, Lindop looks at the intergovernmental agreement with West 40. And it's just a formality as to approve the regional safe school. And the only thing that would change would be the dollar cost per day per student. It is the same dollar amount as last year on it and this would just allow flexibility in case some student would have to be outplaced, we could utilize the safe school as the placement for whatever particular school, student that would potentially need it.
Any questions for Mr. Baranek? If there are none, need a roll call, please.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret? Ms. Jordan Harret, can you hear us?
I do say yay.
Okay. Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. I need a recommendation to approve that administrators and administrative assistants be allowed to extend their vacation days. So if you can read the motion, we can discuss it. Thank you.
Cheryl Griffin?
This is Tanya Taylor.
No, no.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
Okay. Go right ahead, Cheryl. Recommended motion?
I recommend approval that administrators and administrative assistants.
Look at the bottom. There's a recommend, you know, that, that black motion. Just read that one.
I don't, oh, I don't have it up. I was just reading what was on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. She doesn't have a working agenda? Go right ahead.
No, let Tanya go ahead and do it then. I can bring the other one up in the back.
I'm sorry. I didn't know you didn't.
No, that's fine.
I make a motion that the board approved, approved that administrators and administrative assistants be allowed to extend the use of the physical year, physical year 2020 vacation days through December 31st, 2020, with the option to pay out five vacation days if the current accumulation, accumulation is more than 14 days and that is unsafe. Vacation days may be converted into sick days if required due to COVID-19 pandemic.
And a second, please.
A second, area.
Okay. You know, as you all see, this is uncharted waters and the administrative team members, most of them haven't had the opportunity to take off, which presents a problem of overaccumulation because they can only carry over, what, five days or could they carry over anything, Dr. Jackson? You might have to correct me, but there's a limitation of what they can carry over the fiscal year. And so initially, Dr. Jackson was asking to extend their time that they could use it through, through December 31st. But of course, that's gonna present a problem too because by the time the 31st comes, if everybody's taking the 20 days or how many ever day, the days they have that, that are very much highly accumulated numbers of days, then that's gonna be another problem at the end of the year as well. So I actually made a suggestion that part of it be paid out. And that was probably us for an incentive as well. But it also allows that time to be taken care of. And then, you know, Dr. Jackson mentioned there was a, might be a possibility that we can convert the the vacation time into sick time. And I, I'd never heard of that, but that's something that she contacted the lawyer about and that's something that could be done. And then she talked to her staff and they were very supportive. So I'll, I'll, I'll let Dr. Jackson speak about this recommendation as well. But this is uncharted waters and we have, look at all the time that they're putting in to this daily, intimately, our whole administrative team. So this is just an opportunity to let them know we value them as well and to give them some options during this unprecedented pandemic.
Yes, Mrs. Harret. Thank you. The team has been working extremely hard and I know that you all are aware of it, but sometimes it is just nice to know and to be shown that you appreciate it. Typically, I would ask that the administrators be able to carry vacation time through July 31st. But in the situation that we're in, we will not have any downtime. And so I spoke with the team and they're very supportive of this and knowing that they would not be able to take their downtime, but being very appreciative that they're able to have an option for payout if it is approved by the Board of Education. And also with the ending days to be turned in if they cannot use the rest of these days by December 31st, that it would be able to be converted into sick days, which could be used towards retirement. I did do some background work on that to find out if it was indeed legal and you all should have that in board book where it is absolutely allowable. And so we are just asking that you consider and approve this recommendation.
I have a question, Dr. Jackson. Per what you sent us, it also says that the employee has to be willing to. Do we have, do you have a statement or something for them to put in writing that they're requesting this?
I do have something for them to add that in writing and I've also had initial conversations with each member.
And just to mention, this is specifically for those that have over 14 days.
Yes, ma'am.
The ones that have a minimum amount of days that, you know.
They would be.
They would be omitted from. They will be omitted from this, right? This is just to resolve those ones that, those staff members that had an excessive amount of time. Any more comments from any of the board members? Any concerns? Any?
Will you update the board to who took payouts and where we are, where staff members are in terms of their time?
Yes, ma'am. I will.
Make sure that's, make sure we monitor that in the Finance Committee as well. Make sure we'll have that for the board. We won't forget that. So don't forget it's up to five vacation days. It won't be an excessive amount. The conversion time will be something that they'll have to. And then some people may not want to convert their vacation times, but then again, you know, you know, that'll be something that Dr. Jackson will discuss with her team. Any comments from anyone else? Any concerns?
This is Board Member Dawson.
Tanya Taylor, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Brian. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah. I have a question just because I'm trying to just understand it. This is my first time. Well, it's everybody's first time dealing with this. But just so I understand, President, they cash out five days. The remaining days could possibly turn into sick days that then get banked toward retirement?
If they choose to.
And if they don't, they roll over? Is that it?
Well, sick time is a rollover, you know.
No, I mean the vacation days, the vacation days that are left.
Dr. Jackson, you can speak on that one because I think they'll, it's still will lose it by the December 31st if it's not used.
Absolutely. If it's not used by December 31st, it would be lost. If you chose not to have it converted, you would lose the days. It would not carry over until, until 2020.
Um, okay. It's not that I have a problem with it, but you, you, so what we're saying, for instance, if, if we were looking, Dr. Jackson has, you know, 16 vacation days or whatever. You could take a five-day payout, but then you would lose 11 days?
No.
You'd take them by December 30th?
Or convert them into the sick days.
Right. If you don't convert them, you lose all that time.
Yes.
I, I'll say this though. I'll say this though. You know, I am not sure if, in other words, there are the, I, I try not to be careful, you know, stepping in the realm of telling Dr. Jackson how to, I'm not going to dance on that floor, but there's no way if I know that I have a right to vacation time, I would find a way that a staff member could use it, you know, in a, in a way. In other words, this is what the discussion is right now, you know. Some may say, you know what, I want to take my vacation time, and that'll be a plan. We have to, we have to know that that's something, you know, that professionally they're going to work out. And, and as an incentive, this is another option. But those other days, of course, we're not going to say you, I mean, I, I don't want to get into that, but you know what I'm saying? I, I draw back from, you know, that is something that a administrator, our superintendent, will manage with her staff and it's historically have not been a problem. I think, I think they just work it out as a team. But being absent also is a big loss. When you have a team, you work it out, you know, and, you know, you, because some people may need a vacation. It may not be an option. They may just need to have time off mentally.
Yeah, I understand that.
Those are waters that I think that, I don't know.
What is being presented to us as board members and being up here in the balcony, I'm just looking at it. And I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that, that, you know, that, that's fair to them. Because these are unprecedented times and I just want to make sure that we're, you know, as she said, we, we want to feel appreciated or something like that.
Absolutely.
And I, I wanted to let them know, you know, I would even be okay if, you know, we did let them roll that over just because this is unprecedented. But I just, I just wanted a full understanding of what was going on.
Absolutely. You know, I, 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 that's exactly what this is for. You know, it's a lot. And I'm going to tell you this, Mr. Dawson, we've never ever thought, we've never considered this. And Dr. Jackson didn't even present this to me, by the way. She presented it for the 31st and first thing I'm saying, well, it's going to be a problem then. You're going to have 14 on top of 20 more. What are you going to do then? And, and, and in other words, she wasn't trying to ask for too much. And so I appreciate your questions, Dr., Mr. Dawson, because everybody needs to be clear. So if anybody else has anything, I mean, it's the right time to talk because this is unusual. This is an unusual situation, unprecedented on every level. But this is a hybrid, a hybrid type of resolution. I'm telling you this, I've never even knew you can convert, me and Vicky, me and Mrs. Arrington, it was something that was discussed in, in our finance meeting, her and I both. This is uncharted waters for both of us. We're like, I've never heard that you can convert your sick, your vacation days into sick days. But this is a different system than me. My state system wasn't optional like that for us. But it's, it's, it's different here. Any other comments?
You know, I do one last comment. The team is aware of it and we know that we have a job before us and it has to be done. And so there was never any other discussion. We are grateful for this.
Any other concerns, Ms. Taylor? Mr. Hannah?
I don't, I don't have a concern. I'm, I'm, I'm clear as to what the recommendation is. And I feel as though we have attorneys who have looked at the guidelines and looked at the information. I feel as though our administrative team, as everyone else has said, have been doing a lot. Their team, they'll work it out as far as schedules. I'm a believer that Dr. Jackson will have this under control, so I truly agree.
Ms. Williams Wilford, any other, thank you so much, Ms. Williams Wilford.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Williams. Okay, well, I'll go. I got the floor. I really don't have a comment or concern about it. As far as comment wise, I think it's only right that we give it to them. They've been working hard. They continue to work hard. They will continue to work hard. And like Ms. Taylor just stated, that they'll figure the scheduling part of all that out. So that's not something that we should be concerned about. I trust fully that Dr. J and the entire administrative staff, administrative staff can, can definitely make sure the day-to-day operations still function with whoever decides to take vacation, whenever they decide to take vacation. I think they need it and they definitely deserve it.
Yep. Ms. Williams Wilford, any concerns?
I definitely support what's presented. However, I do hope some kind of way administrative team are able to take some time to refresh. Because wow, has it been a year like none other. And so they can come back, you know, refresh because we don't know what the latter part of this year is going to, you know, require. So, you know, whatever they need to do, but I do hope that they able to take a break because it's been a rough year.
Ms. Arrington?
No, you know, I've, I've been able to process this before tonight. But I will say there are people that won't even opt to take the five days. It's, it's not, isn't, if I'm understanding it right, it's their option to even take the payout, correct?
Correct. Everything is their option.
Yep.
Yes, Mrs. Arrington?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Griffin, any comments? I, I ask everybody individually just because this is a unusual thing and I just want everybody's feedback. We want everybody to have an opinion and be respected. So thank you. Ms. Griffin, anything?
Yes, I would have to say that first and foremost, I fully support Dr. Jackson because I know that she would have researched this thoroughly before bringing it to us. And secondly, I think that all of the staff, both administrative and teaching, have a because as they say, this has been an unprecedented year. And we're going into unknown and we're personally, I think we're handling it really great as we're traversing through these times. But yes, I totally support her decision on this.
All right. Without further to do, roll call, please.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. We need a recommended approval regarding the summer work schedule, please?
I make a motion, Vicky Arrington. I make a motion that the board approve to begin the summer work schedule commencing Wednesday, July 1st, 2020 through July 31st, 2020 from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. as follows. Mondays and Fridays off campus, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays on campus from 8:00 a.m. to 12 noon to 12 p.m. and off-site 12 p.m. to 4:30 p.m.
Second, please?
I second it.
I'll let Dr. Jackson start with this one.
Yes, and so as we began to come back into the building, currently we are in the buildings Mondays and Wednesdays. We're all there and we just want to ease in as we're going into our next phase. We'll have some additional guidance. The schedule will be flexible depending on the necessity of what needs to be done. And we would make a decision about if we needed to come in to just make sure that everything is completed the way that it needs to be. Are there any questions?
If there are no questions, roll call, please?
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Ms. Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Discussion on board retreat and board self-evaluation. Just wanted to update the board. As you know, ISB is not, I mean, districts aren't having retreats right now. So that is why it hadn't been presented earlier. But one thing that they are doing are board self-evaluations. And I know we haven't had one with our new team. And that's something that, right now, ISB doesn't even recommend any Zoom meeting or a board evaluation of a time longer than 90 minutes, so it'll be more than, no more than an hour and a half. And I was just curious if, if that's something that we might want to do. As a board self-evaluation, what it does is just helps us to self-evaluate, just like we evaluate Dr. Jackson and she evaluates her team. We self-assess for self-improvement. And we do that with, under the, you know, the guidance of the Illinois School Board Association. Something we've done in the past. We haven't done it with this team. Just wanted your thoughts about it, you know, if that's something you thought we could benefit from and probably before the school begins. Any, any, any feedback or thoughts about that? The board retreat is definitely not something that's going to happen. They're not doing those right now. But a board self-evaluation wouldn't be more than 90 minutes. It would be a Zoom meeting as well.
And our field director would facilitate that or a field?
Yes, a field director would facilitate that. Any thoughts? Or we can, you know, defer it if you'd like. Or we can, you know, it's, it's good when a board self-evaluates oneself. And I know this is a different situation. But there's certain things we could always look at to improve our system.
Board President, this is Tanya Taylor. I make a suggestion of you can see what days that the facilitator have available for us, the calendar. And then let's work around that calendar date.
We can pretty much do it anytime. We just have to, we have to just know that we want to do it. In other words, you know, if the board feels it's of value, this is something that really, because it's only an hour and a half, it's not a time. It's just a matter of when the board wants to do it and we can come back with specific dates. But we can decide if we want to do it in August, September, July. We can decide that ourselves now. It's not like a board retreat where we have to gather two, two days in a weekend. You know, it's really one evening and we can shoot out some times later. But I just want to make sure we, we want to do it before we get to times. So that means you're saying you support that, Tanya? Yes?
Yes, I support it. Yes.
And it's not, it's a poll, Ms. Arrington?
I support it.
Mr. Hannah?
I support it.
Mr. Dawson?
I support it.
Ms. Griffin?
I support it.
Last, but certainly not least, Ms. Williams Wilford?
Sure.
Okay. July or August, you know, would, would anybody have any preference with July or August? Dr. Jackson, any thoughts? With, with the team schedule, with your, what you have to do, because I know that you'll be a part of it as well. Is there, you have any forethought with that yourself? Is it really, really busy right now in July or be a better time in August?
July would be better than August. Absolutely.
Did somebody else say something? Was that you, Penny?
No, I didn't say anything, but I, I'm in the background saying I totally agree with Dr. Jackson. July is much better than August. I can't even see doing anything in August, to be honest. I probably, it'll be very difficult for me to join something in August.
Okay, so we'll try to, we'll get some dates out, like Tanya said. You know, we'll, we'll pull some dates together from our field services person. You know, we're going to see who is available and then we're going to go from there. So Dr. Jackson and the Flores and I will come back with some dates, as Tanya said. Sounds good? We'll keep it moving. We'll keep it moving. Discussion on Qube. This is all business we're moving to? And is that right, Dr. Jackson? I'm in the right area, aren't I? Yes, I am. Old business, discussing on Qube. And just to mention, you know, we approved Qube prior to COVID. And I'm, I'm not sure if you all read your, the emails that they were, they sent out, that they really canceled the face-to-face conference. Actually, all NSBA activities are canceled through December, through the end of the year. They haven't touched next year's conference yet, but everything is canceled. Every single event through December 31st with ISB, I mean, with NSA, National School Board Association, at least in person. So if you remember, the cost of that was, and it wasn't a minimal cost and no, we're going to, I wanted to bring it up as well as to see if it's something that was, something that we still want to do it as a board because of this COVID state of affairs. But since we've approved it, they changed it to an online conference only. You know, in other words, it would be instead of costing $400 and hotel costs and all that, now it's, I think, down to $199 for three different days and this is Zoom conference. I'm not sure if we as a boards even want to do it, but I wanted to mention, I know we approved it. I'd like everybody's feedback in regards to this conference.
For me, this is Vicky. I, I, the information they have out there for me isn't enough detail as far as what they're offering right now. Yet I wouldn't want to close the door at this point for, until I knew what they had to. what uh they had to offer virtually. Um, anyway, that's why I have to say.
This is Cheryl.
Yeah, go right ahead, Cheryl.
Personally, for myself, I can't do computer long term. So it's like after a period of time, it's like my attention span just, just being honest here. My attention span over a period of time, I can't stay focused that long, just sitting there looking at a computer screen. I didn't do good on online learning, even in college. I would much prefer to do things, you know, there with the instructor where you've got that environment. That's just my opinion on it.
Any other feedback from any other vote, uh, board members?
As board member Dawson, I would say that if it were a, a free event and we could attend, you know, uh, as we wished, you know, I would be interested, but I think we may find ourselves cash strapped come fall. And every bit of uh money and resources we have, we might be looking to keep. And I don't anticipate us being blown away by the session offerings at Cube. And so unless, unless they, they were, you know, giving something that we felt was, you know, eminently beneficial to our district, I don't, I don't, my vote would be no to, and just for cost savings.
Okay, and, and just to provide my opinion, you know, I, 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 I would withdraw personally. You know, I really don't feel like it's something financially, I know it's uh not a high cost, but I'll tell you this. Um, we can buy a couple of computers with, with that one ninety-nine or at least what, one? You know, I'm not sure what, and either way it goes, um, a part of this conference to me, uh, the bigger part of the Cube conference, because I'm not blown away, I was blown away more by more of ISB as well as the national conference. But the networking piece is the key for me for, for Cube. And without that networking piece, that, that is just not something that I uh, I think that's a big piece is missing for me with the Cube, uh, that networking piece. So I uh, the value for right now, I, I, I agree probably with Mr. Dawson. So I, I, I just wanted to get that on the table because of course we had registered as a district right when we first approved it. And then we um put a hold on it until the board can decide what they were gonna do, because we didn't, what we were gonna do as a board, because we don't want to just have that on the table so they can just have our registration money without us making the decision, uh, because this is not the conference we were promised. And then things have happened, COVID is here. So.
Did we pay for it already?
We, we paid for the initial, Dr. Um, Jackson?
We put the deposit down.
Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
When I saw the email, Penny, I asked, uh, they checked on it right away. And um, is that Vicky? I'm sorry, I thought it was, but I did ask Vicky right away. And they said that they were um, that they were refunded, right, Ms. Suarez?
Uh, board president, that wasn't me. I'm not sure who asked that question. That wasn't me.
Um, I, yeah, Vicky was, I apologize, Vicky.
And so, but we can't our money back, because I, to be honest, I could go either way. But I would lean towards after listening to the discussion, you, you and actually what Ms. Griffin said too. That is three days of sitting down in front of a computer and, and you don't gra, you don't garner the benefit as what we get from going to Cube in person, so I think I've been kind of convinced to say no, actually. I wasn't really saying yes either. I know I was being nebulous, but I would say no at this point after listening to the discussion.
It sounds like we're leaning towards pulling out altogether. Is that, is that a poll? Can we poll that? Um.
That's why I asked if that, if our monies were, was refundable.
Yeah, I'd ask, I, I, definitely, yes. We actually asked them to give it back because it wasn't the conference that we expected. We can always resubmit if we needed to, um, but that four hundred dollars is not the conference that we had asked for and then we were gonna put it, discuss it anyway because of COVID. And COVID is here and we have other things that probably, you know, are more pertinent. So just gonna take a poll real quickly, you know, and this is for uh withdrawing. If you would like to withdraw from this conference, um, Ms. Arrington?
Yeah, I would, I would withdraw at this point.
Mr. Dawson?
Withdraw.
Ms. Hannah?
Withdraw.
Mr. Ms. Williams Wolford?
Withdraw.
Ms. Taylor?
Withdraw.
And last but not least, Ms. Griffin?
Withdraw.
I agree with withdrawal, so uh no need to, just, just anything per board directive. Um, Dr. Jackson, if you could just make sure we, we get that money refunded, that deposit uh back to the district. Thank you so much. Thank you, board team.
Yes, I will.
Moving right along, approval of uh to have the playground resurfaced.
This is Tanya Taylor. I make a motion that the board approve to have the playground resurfaced at a total cost of forty-five thousand dollars.
I second.
Okay, Mr. Ballantyne, Mr. Beranek?
Good evening again, board education and community and staff. Uh, we were looking to get the playground uh in the rear of the south side of the building, two playgrounds resurfaced. We've been gathering quotes. We got three quotes from different vendors and this is most feasible cost. Um, we're looking to get this done in July. Any questions?
Not at all. Any questions for any board members? If there are none, roll call please.
Board member Williams Wolford?
Yay.
Board member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board member Arrington?
Yay.
Board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Hannah?
Yay.
Board member Taylor?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a recommended approval for the tentative budget for FY twenty twenty-one.
This is Vicky. I make a motion that the board approve the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one.
And a second please.
Daryl Griffin, I second.
Go right ahead, Mr. Beranek.
Is he on mute?
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute. This is, this is the first read of the tentative budget. It's been a very difficult budget to look at due to the fact that there are so many uncertain factors that are out there. Um, if we can move to the next slide, I just want to give the, the financial summary of it. So on this slide here, we have what our current fund balance is starting June one. And then as you go across, it has estimated revenues and expenditures in each fund. Um, I'll get into what the assumptions are to come up with this. But uh, some of the, you know, if you notice, there is some deficit spending in various funds and I will go through why we have that and that, but on the bottom of this, if you look, fund balance currently sits at roughly ten point one million. And it will decrease to nine point five. That's a decrease of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand amongst all funds. I did run the fund balance by the auditor and what, how they calculate it. We're still um eleven point something uh months of reserve with it, so almost twelve months of reserve, which is good with our fund balances. But like I said, this is a very difficult uh time to try to predict what our budget will come in at for the next school year. If we can move to the next slide, can go over some of the revenue assumptions. Uh, number one, if you remember, the district applied for the property tax relief grant back in February, March. And we were approved and we abated three hundred and I believe I have three sixty on here. I went back and checked with the county. It was actually three eighty that was abated on it. So I'll have to change that figure on it, but um it is reflected still in the revenue side that we abated the three eighty. That does affect collection for August and March of next school year with it. Um, I also budgeted in for tax collection loss of five percent. The current budget has that we're gonna receive ninety-seven percent of all our revenue from our taxpayers. Due to the uncertainty, um, I budgeted it at ninety-two percent. I did run the figure by our district auditor, the township treasurer and several of the neighboring uh districts too, to see what they were doing. Some had as high as a loss of ten percent collection. I just thought that was just too high with being that we were at ninety-seven percent historically, so a five percent loss of collection um is what I'm predicting for next year. There is also going to be a lot of tax appeals. This is a reassessment year for Cook County. With it, I'm anticipating a lot more assessments for residential and commercial property. I did budget in for tax appeals based off of what our current actuals were with um tax appeals. The problem with this is the district only gets notified of businesses that have over a hundred thousand dollars in taxes. Then we can have our attorneys jump in and intervene to try to secure as much revenue from them. But that doesn't stop the local residents um for putting in the tax appeals. And there was also an email that was sent out from Cook County making it easier for taxpayers to appeal their taxes. So this is why I'm anticipating a little bit more of this uh tax appeals for this current year coming up. Our levy for twenty twenty CPI is two point three percent. That is the factor that will be used for the twenty twenty levy. We will be using that and levying um within the standards. We will get, we will capture CPI. Um, the property tax relief grant, we did receive our evidence-based funding money. So what that was is you had to abate proper taxes to get state money. So it gives relief to the local taxpayer and puts more burden on the state. We did receive that and we will continue to receive the three hundred moving forward. Um, the next assumption is, is the state's in kind of a financial crisis. And even though they said that they were going to keep education funding at the same level, it's just a statement that has been stated out there, doesn't mean that the district is going to receive the payments that we are owed. Uh, currently for this year, we've only received two payments from the state and we're still sitting out there for two additional payments, so all the experts in the field um are anticipating that you'll receive your final two payments from FY twenty in FY twenty-one and then you will receive one payment that you are owed for your categoricals in twenty-one. So that's something that the district's gonna have to watch. Um, that special ed reimbursement, transportation reimbursement, those are our two biggest on that. Um, grant funding has remained the same. That's the pre-K grant, title one, title two, for an idea. Um, we have maxed out our current grants in pre-K, title two, title four, an idea. The only grant that we have um unspent money in currently is title one. Um, what we're trying to do with the title one grant though, I'm getting final numbers here before June thirtieth to see where we are at. Um, we will not be giving any money back. I'm trying to see where we fall. Title one has a um, a guidance that says districts can carry over fifteen percent of the allotment into the following school year. So I'm thinking that we're gonna be right around that fifteen percent, so what wasn't spent in FY twenty will carry over into FY twenty-one. If worst case scenario, we can put in for a waiver with title one and carry over more than the fifteen percent, we will not lose any money with it. Um, the reason why we didn't spend all the money in this one is, is due to school closure. Some of the consultant fees that we had came in under what was the amount that they were approved for, for the mere fact that they didn't do their in-person trainings with staff and students and all the key members of Lindop. If we move to the expenditure side, the next slide, I do have estimates for salaries. That's our largest expenditure out there. It's currently budgeted at what the FY twenty CBA agreements are out there. Those are the placeholders that we have. Um, that is subject to change as um negotiations are still going on, but I wanted to put a placeholder out there just so that it's in the budget reflected. Uh, benefits, the HMO went up four point three percent and PPO six point seven. That's an eighteen thousand dollar increase. The purchase services that we have out there, um, I figure that they will go up three percent. Our biggest one is special education placement and that's an estimate of forty thousand dollar increase. Some of the other key factors that are in the budget um as a fail, as a kind of like a safeguard, we still have to pay the pace roof, the playground surface of forty-five thousand, additional costs for PPE to reopen the school and then additional money for Chromebooks and MacBooks for students and teachers. Also server update, firewall update for all of the remote instruction that went out to our current students during school closure. So these are some of the major assumptions that we have. Like I said, um, it is a deficit budget of roughly six hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And the biggest thing on that is the revenue side with it. That's um the unknown right now. Still have to budget all the expenditures as if we're coming back and kept them at uh basically the same level as last year. Are there any questions in regards to the tentative budget for FY twenty-one?
Okay, if there are no other questions, I need a roll call please.
Board member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board member Arrington?
Yay.
Board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Hannah? Board member Taylor?
Yay.
Board member Williams Wolford?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve the second read and adoption of press plus issue one oh three. Ms. Williams Wolford or Mr. Dawson?
Mr. Dawson, you want to go ahead now, second it? I'm sorry. Mr. Dawson, if you want to make the motion, I'll second it.
Oh, okay. All right, um, let's see. I recommend, this is uh Brian Dawson, board member. I recommend approval for the second read and adoption of press plus issue one oh three adopted as presented by ISB and the five-year review.
And a second please.
I second it. Board member Williams Wolford?
Okay. Is there any discussion um at all, Ms. Williams Wolford, Mr. Dawson, any? You can give us any, any comments about these policies or any comments at all? If not?
It's a second read. If anybody has questions, we can answer it, but.
Any questions for any board members? Any comments? No changes from what ISB presented, Penny and Mr. Dawson?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So if there are no additional questions, we need a roll call please.
Board member Arrington?
Yay.
Board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Hannah?
Yay.
Board member Taylor?
Yay.
Board member Williams Wolford?
Yay.
And board member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion, motion carries. Okay, I need a, a motion to approve. I need a, a motion to approve the utilization of a privacy non-disclosure agreement, please. That's the number five.
I make a motion, Vicky Arrington, board vice president. I make a motion that the board approve to utilize a privacy non-disclosure agreement to grant outside entities approval to, to limited access to, to class dojo as outlined therein.
Thank you very much. And a second please.
Board member Williams Wilford, I second.
Okay. Any discussion? Dr. Jackson.
This was brought back before we had the closure. And there were two entities that had asked to, for permission to utilize class dojo and posts. One was Mayor Thompson, and that was to post any beneficial information or resources for our families as well as Ms. Simmons from the library posting events and things that are coming up for the children.
So this is just that agreement. Thank you for doing that and following through with that. Definitely appreciate it. Any discussion or any questions for any board members?
Cheryl Griffin.
Right here.
I just had the question that anything that's being put on there, someone's reviewing it prior to it's actually being physically posted, whereas the public can see it, can they not? Is someone reviewing it?
Dr. Spalding and Mr. Kenobi are reviewing the class dojos.
Prior to posting.
The content and the content normally Mayor Thompson or Ms. Simmons will send it to them in an email. There have not been instances of anything going wrong, but I do understand your concern. And so yes, it is being monitored.
Any other questions from any other board members? There are none. Roll call, please.
Board member Griffin.
Yay.
Board member Dawson.
Yay.
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Board member Taylor.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board member Jordan Harrod.
Yay.
And board member Arrington.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay. I need a recommendation to begin the board meetings early. So if someone can read the motion, I'd appreciate it. I hate to read the same thing over again. I've been trying to shorten it just to be able to have.
This is Tanya Taylor. I make a motion that the board approve to begin board meetings on July 21st and August 18th of 2020 at 5:30 PM.
And a second please.
Vicky.
Is that Mr. Hannah? Mr. Hannah seconded? Okay. I guess I can begin this one. You know, we really, just trying to keep, our staff members are there during the daytime. There's a big break between the two, between the meetings and the end of the day. Even us as board members is a big gap. And it's just sometimes it's kind of good to assess what we're doing and see if we can even, we can just modify it, even if it's for a brief period of time. I know in the past, we've talked about maybe not having a July meeting. That's what some districts don't do. But it seems like the districts that don't have a meeting in July, or at least have a modified situation, have two meetings a month, I've noticed. But the way we do things, we, it's hard for us not to have a meeting, it seems, especially right now. But this was a compromise. I did contact every board member. And this was, I got the majority to respond. And this was the majority requested that this was 5:30 was the better time. This is of course up for discussion. And if anybody have any concerns that they, as they think about it right now, hopefully it's, it's a better situation for us to be, hopefully be gone by this time next month. Start at 5:30 and be out of here by 7:30 if we can. It's a longer meeting, just giving some recognition. But your turn. Please provide feedback and, and input. So appreciate it. Ms. Williams Wilford?
I didn't say anything.
Ms., Ms. Arrington?
I am, I'm for it. I'm for it for the reasons you've stated.
Thank you. Anybody have, Mr. Dawson? Any concerns with the time?
5:30 is okay.
Okay. Ms. Taylor?
5:30 is okay.
Ms. Griffin?
5:30 is fine with me.
Mr. Hannah?
5:30 works for me.
And I know that Dr. Jackson, that was a time that she said that that was a good time for the administrative team as well. She'd already, is that true, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we're all in agreement. 5:30 will work.
Without further to do, we need a roll call, please.
Board member Dawson.
Yay.
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Board member Taylor.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board member Jordan Harrod.
Yay.
Board member Arrington.
Yay.
Board member Griffin.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. And thank you for president's report. I have none. I think we, we've covered enough topics today rather than hear me anymore. So we'll go on to Dr., to the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much. This will be fast. The first thing is the virtual graduation for those who may not have been able to attend just the photo. Next slide. And it was a magnificent celebration. And I would just like to publicly, publicly thank Dr. Spalding, Mr. Kenobi, the eighth grade team, Mrs. Tough, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Tanksley, who came out and decorated for us, Mrs. Christensen, who came back in, as well as Mr. Ellisky for making sure that the technology and the videos were done perfectly. So thank you. Next on the list is the end of the year car parade. Everyone did not have a chance to participate in that. So we just have a little clip. But I'd also like to say thank you to the PTSO, to Officer Kasek, and to Mr. Kenobi for making this happen. Okay, that was a wonderful time. Just so good to see everyone. And we also had the McDonald's social distancing graduation. And we want to thank again Mayor Thompson for that and DJ Kenobi. Here's a little clip for those of you who were unable to attend.
Hi, I'm State Senator.
Okay, our new website will be ready. We'll have some additional information for you by June 30th. So be on the lookout for it. That concludes my report. Thank you.
I do want to make a comment about that parade that we did through the, the city. For those of you all who drove it, you know, initially it was like, oh, we're going to drive around. After a while, it became a, it, it became an emotional event, really. You could see how happy those kids were to see their, their teachers, their principal, you know? I'm just telling you, you just saw it, then the time they put into making posters and they just felt, I mean, it was really something else. It, it felt, you could feel it, how wonderful it was, you know? So thank you all for putting that together and allowing me to attend. You know, it was, it was fantastic. But anyway, moving on to committee reports. Finance committee. We had our meeting on last Thursday. Ms. Arrington, thank you so much.
Certainly. And actually I have a lot to say other than to say that what we discussed at the meeting has been presented tonight by Mr. Baranik, and it was the tentative budget that we just approved for fiscal year 2020 or 2021. And the discussion of the FEMA grant that was discussed earlier this evening.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
That's it though.
That concludes your report, Ms. Arrington. Thank you so much. There was no personnel meeting. Pace-Gorman Board Meeting, Mr. Dawson?
Yes, Pace, the next upcoming meeting will be Thursday. As far as the previous meeting, main things that happened is we discussed what was going on with e-learning with the children. By the end of the, the, the school year, they felt as though they had given out enough mainly packets to children for, for e-learning. They, they weren't quite as prepared as we were. So, you know, every child didn't get a, a device. But they supplied every child with the paper and paper package for e-learning. Unfortunately, they didn't have a virtual graduation either. Unfortunately, they just had the teachers kind of reach out to the kids. There's an upcoming meeting on Thursday, and we're going to speak again about opening up school. And I'll be letting everyone know at our next meeting what Pace plans to do. That's about it.
Excuse me, board president. I'm sorry, you skipped so fast over the Personnel Committee one. Is there any way possible we can get an update on how many positions are open that the district is seeking employment for?
Yes, Dr. Jackson?
Yep, we do. We do not have any open positions now. We did have a second grade position and a music position open. Both of those have been filled. We do not have any others open as of yet. We did have one Pace employee who is relocating, but that position for the speech pathologist has also been filled.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Is that sufficient, Ms. Williams Wilford?
That's fine. I just thought the board should know where we stand because sometimes we have.
Not a problem.
Openings and sometimes we have more than we anticipated.
Yep. And maybe that's something that we, we can report out on. Ms. Arrington, what do you think? Maybe open positions perhaps? That's a good idea. We just talk about it among the chair. Think chair over there?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Okay. We, it'll be under discussion with the chair. Moving right along, safety SEL. Any, anything to report out? I know the meeting is going to be coming up. If there are none, we'll keep it right on move. And policy meeting? Anything to report on?
We did press 103 today. That second read, we voted on that. That was the most important thing. And like I said, that was the second read. So that's, that's about it, right Penny? I can't think of anything else.
Thank you.
Exactly.
About para, nothing, right? We, we, that's not, that's not meeting right now, right? Ms. Taylor, Ms. Griffin? There was no meeting on that.
No, there was. No meeting.
Thank you. Technology meeting? Any update with that? I know the, the next meeting date is to, to be determined. So nothing to report out. I know the lots have been going on with technology though. Community engagement that's tabled until further notice. Negotiations meeting? We have our next meeting on the 18th, right, Ms. Griffin?
That's correct.
Yep. We'll provide an update the next board meeting. Okay. And that concludes our committee reports. And moving on to public comments. Are there any public comments at this point? There are. I haven't been given any, put it that way. There are. There are. Thank you so much. And there is no executive session the way, I'm, I'm sure you guys are happy to hear, right? So need a motion to adjourn the Lindop School Board meeting at 9:45 PM, please.
This is Brian Dawson. I make a motion that we adjourn the Lindop School Board meeting at 9:46 PM.
And a second?
A second.
Let me have a roll call because we haven't done this before. Roll call, please, Ms. Juarez.
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Board member Taylor.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board member Jordan Harrod.
Yay.
Board member Arrington.
Yay.
Board member Griffin.
Yay.
Board member Dawson.
Yay.
Motion absolutely carries. Have a great day and we'll see you at 5:30 on, on, in July. Yeah. Have a, have a great, have a great evening. We're out of here at 9:47. It's kind of late, but it's still, it's still did pretty good, everybody.
Thank you so much. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Night.